This is more than enough.
And then they zone up.
Okay, the.
It hit a wall.
Yeah, so welcome to committee of all and mayor is a few minutes late, so we are getting started. We have five, five people called in. I wonder if, to you guys, wanted to do a sound check?
Nothing we can do about it regardless.
Okay, we apologize if the sound is bad. We tried to fix the technology, but seemingly it's. Um, much as we can do for now, we're working with.
Worst part, first part.
It's a lot clearer than last time. It's definitely a lot clearer than last time.
Okay, thanks all.
It got clear later, yeah.
You weren't hearing the rest of it. Okay, thanks all.
Okay.
And I guess the test of the meeting was the worst, your pronunciation, so. That's good, you can hear me. So I'll call the meeting to order, and as I said, the mayor should be assorted, and you'll take over. Um. Before we adopt the agenda, so can we adopt the agenda, I see there's a one, one item agenda, just continue to talk about the budget. For my last meeting, I see there's no public participation, I guess that was a mistake. We need some public participation to the agenda.
It's up to you.
Yeah, I think we should.
I'd like to see it at the front and end as we normally would.
Okay. Any other, any other request to change the agenda? I want to add public participation as two items, two and three.
No. And at the end?
Um, and at the end, yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
So who has amended?
I. All in favor?
I.
I.
Yes.
Okay, so that would bring us to public participation. We have D U V in the audience, so. The mayor of the audience is D U, okay, online. If you are like to give us any advice or mention anything on the budget, please raise your hand. Go in once. Then twice, if you didn't find the hand button and you want to speak, you can open the mic and try. If not, bring everyone.
So. I was like, no, okay, so you didn't try?
No, we can say that and try, okay. Alright, and maybe we'll give something for the end. Um, approval of prior meeting minutes, not only the five meeting minutes. Right?
We have that.
Yeah.
Where are they?
I mean, they're not on the agenda.
We do have some, but they're not available.
Okay, so we're not approving anything tonight?
No, approving anything, okay. Okay, in which case there will be none business arising from the minutes we've been approved for it. Um, the unfinished business log, we don't go through that committee of the hall, so that will be the council meeting. And that will bring us straight to the one item, as I said, on the agenda. Which is the ongoing budget discussion, and on that note. I will turn it over to.
Who?
To Ross, if it was Joe, it would get one way.
It will be.
Okay, alright, turn it over to Ross.
Thank you. Uh, so just a, a couple of comments before we start tonight, I'll pass it over to Joe. Uh, for those that are kind of trying to keep track of the process, and to sort of coordinate expectations for tonight to the extent we can. Uh, just a reminder that we are doing our best to keep this a two-step process, which I'm sure you recall, part A is. Is, uh, so sort of tentative consensus with regard to the base or the core budget. Now, once that's completed, and hopefully we can get to that by the conclusion of tonight. And then part B would be consideration of all the supplemental items. So, uh, the goal, staff's goal tonight is to help facilitate to the extent we need to council's discussion around. Understanding, uh, what council's tolerance is or for tentative target is with regard to utility rate increases. As well as the core budget. Uh, so that is going to require council to deliver or and or consider whether there are any. Specific line items in the core budget that we wish to see increased. Decreased or otherwise eliminated, and once you have exhausted that list, then you are satisfied. With the, with the outputs associated with that, there will be a. Uh, a, a, a budget number associated with that. Obviously, if there will, that would include tax increase, at least, not least of which is just driven by inflation. And then if we can achieve that tonight, then that will set the stage for part B, which will be the supplemental piece. With that supplemental piece, we'll have. The key staff, people from each department, so this is Carl, this is Phil, this is Barrett. Giving a brief overview of those supplementals, and they will be here for that one, free to ask. And have answered your questions around what these supplementals are, and why, and when, and wherefore, so. With that, I'll turn it over to Joe unless he has any questions of me. At this point.
I have an out-of-the-gate question for Joe. If, that's okay? Unless somebody else has some. So Joe, I asked this at the beginning last time, uh, for an explanation on the. Schedule A. Um, I'm no accountant, um, and I've been pondering the answer, and. I don't know if anybody else understood it, but I'm still, you know, I wonder if in layperson's terms, you could just run through the schedule A. We talked about the need to balance the budget.
Right.
And as I understood it, the items. That we're seeing there at the bottom, we're in a, in, in this, in this version, we're in a four point nine million dollar hole.
Yeah.
Um, and because we haven't made any decisions yet.
Yes.
Um. But if you could just explain to me the grouping above that, again, the amortization and the MFA actuarial gain on debt, so the amortization. Which I see twice. So in layperson's terms, can you explain what that is? It's a depreciation and it's an in and out? What, in layperson's terms, unless somebody else can explain it to me, who's understood it, I still don't get it.
Sure, no problem at all. Um, so, uh, you're, I've got your type of surplus deficit line, um, for twenty twenty four is one million, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Uh, so that, um, has includes a deduction for amortization or an expense for amortization of seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
That's a depreciation.
Depreciation, you got it, okay. So, um, that's our surplus deficit, and then we have a, um, non-cash adjustments. Below that to get to what we're, our cash surplus would be, so depreciation, um, is non-cash. So we added, um, you add it to our surplus, and then we have a MFA actual gain on debt, there's, um, an adjustment that. That's reported each year for the winter debt, and, um, uh, what the fair value of that debt would be. And then that's actually income for us in the revenue side.
Hold it, there's, there's too much talking here.
Can you put that down on the floor or council writer is blocking the camera?
Just a moment, I'm trying to listen.
Okay, buddy, thank you. Put that down so that we can at least tell the.
I'll get to that in a moment, I'm trying to understand something here.
No, I, and we're asking you politely, can you please put the briefcase on the floor so that the camera can capture the meeting? Thank you.
I don't think the camera is not capturing the meeting, so if you could just let me listen to what I'm trying to get an understanding of for the second time here, I'd appreciate that.
Mr. Blackwell. Should the camera be in clear view of council writer?
Yes.
Okay, could you please put your briefcase down on the floor so that?
I, I'd be more than happy to, I'm trying to concentrate on something here.
Okay, well, it's a simple request.
It's a simple request for me, could you allow me to concentrate on this? I think it'll matter, I'm asking you to allow me to concentrate on this, are you okay with that?
No.
This is the budget.
No.
No, you're not, well, then you'll have to get away.
I'm asking you to please put your briefcase down on the floor so that the camera can capture the meeting. It's a simple request.
Simple request that we move on to the material.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll take a break, fifteen minute break. Please turn your cameras off. Thank you. Okay, welcome back to the committee of the whole. Uh, this jerk on. Anyone?
Sure, um, so where we left off is a just discussion of, um, an explanation of, uh, the judgments. From surplus deficit to cash surplus. And so amortization, um, is deduct, or depreciation, so the, that deduction in our, arriving at our surplus, uh, our surplus or deficit. Um, on an operating level, and then we adjust to present what our cash surplus is. Depreciation is a non-cash item, and so we basically reverse it out. So our surplus, our cash surplus increases, that's like go from one point two million to one point nine, and there's a marginal item in there for. Income that, that we report for, uh, actual gains on debt, which is based on the fair value of the debt. Um, and, uh, and so basically we're trying to arrive to, you know, what's really the cash surplus that we're, um, bringing in.
Okay, so just so I understand, the amortization above is listed as a, as a, um, as a debit. But it's not an actual cash debit, and so it's included in there because it's shown as a debit for accounting purposes. But for actual purposes, it's added back in because it's a non-cash debit.
Exactly.
And then the forty-three and change is a, also a debit at that point, and that represents what?
So that's, uh, so we, we carry some debt.
Yep.
And, um, there's a, aside from our usual interest and principal payments, um, there's a. Accounting fiction, I guess, uh, to, um, adjusted to its fair value. And so we recorded MFA actual gain, um, if, you know, interest rates go down versus, or up, versus what we're actually getting locked into. Um, and so that's actually being showed in revenue, um, it's getting other, other revenue up there, the two fifty-eight. So we're taking that as non-cash, it's just, um, basically accounting for our debt and for value. Um, and so that would get down to cash surplus line, the one point nine four eight million, that's basically. Adjusted for non-cash items to what kind of cash we brought in.
Okay, so that is the, uh, surplus above with the adjustments.
Yes.
For non-cash items.
Correct.
Okay, so the one point nine is sort of, in layperson's terms, the actual surplus.
Yeah.
Okay, good, thank you, I appreciate it, yeah.
Um, mayor, may I continue?
Yes.
Yeah. Um, so I guess, um, I would start with the, uh, the bridge from the last version, that was presented to council to the current version. Um, the last three, the whole meeting, uh, we went through, uh, our surplus deficit was eight hundred and seventy-three thousand. Uh, the main adjustment was, um, we included the TransLink connector, uh, grant, um, that can offset the costs associated with the, um, connector. Fund, or, um, costs, so we incorporated that, uh, so we, we actually increased our, our surplus, our grant revenues going up. Um, and there was one item to, uh, remove some fiber pulling costs from Public Works. Uh, our Public Works manager had negotiated with Pelletz to, uh, eat the cost on that, so, um, we got out of costing, and, um.
Is that up on, on mountain? Where they laid the pipe and forgot to put the cable in while they were laying it?
No, there's cable. But it, right now, we have a point-to-point data line, which is unreliable.
Hmm.
So we, we are on the thirteenth of February, so this is pulling fiber.
Okay.
And they're gonna, they're gonna absorb the cost.
Okay.
And then the other item that would, uh, increase our costs, uh, ten, next year ten thousand dollars funded for data connectivity for the P R V stations. Um, it just, uh, after a cost analysis, it's, uh, we're fine, we're, we're, we're refined the estimate of what the cost on an operational basis. The other items, um, we're just tweaking the public, other the, uh, labor model, uh, after discussions with Carl, and try to align. We've run two different models, so just try to align everything together, so that's just, uh, minor stuff.
Joe, questions? So we're adding the three hundred thousand and change in for the TransLink, right, which had not previously been in?
Yeah, we have the costs in there for, uh, the expected cost for capital budgeting, we didn't have the grant in there, so, um, as we send the cost. We'll recognize the grant money, increase the grant.
So we neglected to add the grant even though we'd added the costs, okay.
So, and maybe we talked about the, um, the grants from we did to those items, um. Wasn't quite sure on the, the beach park grant in, in, into this report. I was a bit confused as to what was project costs. Versus what was, um, actuals or what was actually our costs as in the grant. But generally, so what you're telling us, the actual. The grant funding is actually already included, included in the income.
It is.
It is. Before there, you were grant funding, and now you've added the connected to it.
Yes.
Okay. And keep that in mind when we get to the other section, I think, yeah, and maybe, if you like getting tonight, maybe I have a simple table of each grant. What we've spent, what we've claimed, um, what's outstanding, and what our cost will be.
So, yeah, I definitely can find that, you know.
Grand status.
Maybe beach park class and these are creating connections with clinics, well, we spend money on these as well, we're using this one, fifteen thousand.
Yeah, no problem at all. Um, so I would suggest, uh, nothing has changed in this model, aside from the bridge here, uh, some, uh, that we talked through. Uh, nothing's changed from the, uh, else from the previous version that, uh, we've gone through. We just got to the end of Public Works, and so it suggests we move to, um, age. Eighteen of the package, which is, uh, starting at general fund of water. So I did add in this version, uh, just, uh, for greater clarity, um, what, um, in the notes. Section here, what we're bringing in from water user rates, um, water expenditures, which not just this, uh, table above. To what the surplus will be for the current, now this is about the five percent, um, increase in user rates. So our.
So what, what are user rates, five percent increase, but we have no, but that's breed war staff. Costs, there's no contract or anything on, on water.
Well, no, we're, um, planning on using a contractor to service hydrants. Which is a distribution cost, seventy-two hydrants at five hundred dollars, uh, hydrant. A and B services, which is seals, greasing, we're gonna sandblast them, we're gonna repaint them, we're gonna, uh, stencil names on them. It's well overdue, so that, that is a contracted cost that we're gonna do in water. And we are.
So you're calling it since two thousand for all of them?
Uh.
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six, so we have two hundred and seventy-five hundred each.
And we are also going to get in a, uh. Leak detection. For. Just to try and get ahead.
The thirty-six was the previous repainting fee?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it was never repainted, I understand.
Yeah.
Uh, John, we're talking fast, so.
Yeah. Would we, would we allow for the leak detection?
Fifteen, I think. Uh, if you were, uh, yes, it should be in here somewhere, yeah, yeah. But other than that, it is standard operating, yeah, costs, yeah. Uh, except for, I, I believe that in here we have the money for rock scaling.
There is, uh, rock scaling, um. Uh, twenty thousand dollars for the current year, it was budgeted last year, and that, and we didn't do it, so we're gonna rebudget that, so that's.
So creepiest year, the rock scaling was another one that was always in the supplementals. So, but now we're going in the, in the operating cost line.
Yes, and there would be a supplemental from last year, but it, uh, it's not a capital item, that's all.
But, uh, we've had that discussion, I'm, I'm, I'm not against the move, I think it does make more sense, especially on. Road paving. And breaking, um, we should really know event maintenance issue.
Right, it's not complex.
Um, so, yeah, I just, so things on, so it's probably, you might see things move when you look at the supplementals year, year on year because of that.
Yeah, it's a work in progress, I'd say, we're, we're still, you know, way to get, uh, meaningful, origins to origins.
But to the rest of the water fund, it's really just staff time and costs.
Yeah.
And then there's, there's been a hard increase of any, in, in, I mean, everything's gone up by its escalation.
Things have gone up, uh, we are not planning on changing the way that we, uh, disinfect, we're still going with, uh, certain, uh, product. Um, down the road, we'll be talking about, uh, using chlorination or, uh, some, some other ozoneation, perhaps. Um. The only other thing that's gonna, we, we didn't budget it, I, I believe, maybe it's in the, uh, I C recommendation, and that is for pH adjustment. But that's, that is a capital item. Okay.
I'm sorry, what is the bluff?
It was in the I C. So the roads specifically to Mag, but Army to seven percent as well. Uh, slough all, all the time.
Okay.
And then there's the rock right now on the Mag road, we can get around it luckily, uh, so we don't have to walk in, that's the size of a car. Okay, done, or basically.
So it's dealing with air and boulders?
Yeah, yeah, essentially taking the horse that we keep.
Well, they're going, they're going in scale sections of the, the slopes, so it doesn't have.
Understood, okay.
Gravity winds.
And ultimately. But we're trying to keep ahead of it.
Right, okay, um, just, um, before we do the detailed notes, um, and, um, yeah, and that's just everything, like, some questions like, uh, good. On this, uh, I, I guess I would, uh, draw your attention to the increase, decrease in budget. Twenty twenty four budget versus twenty twenty-three, and then can also compare to the twenty, the actual. Um, is there anything in particular that you'd like to, um, uh, ask about? Um, I would say that, that in that bridge, you saw the, um, increase in data connectivity for, uh, P R V stations, that represents a ten thousand dollar increase there. Uh, maintenance costs have gone down thirty thousand dollars from the last budget, we only spent sixty-seven thousand dollars last year. Um, and that's we're budgeting for eighty-one in the current year, um, uh, significant decrease from the prior budget. And, uh, salaries and, and professional contract fees, that's the, um, uh, hydrology or, uh, leakage cost there. And that increase, and then salaries and benefits are coming from the labor model, and incorporating expected salary increases.
And so all the contractors that are doing, performing personnel roles like COG are all including salaries and benefits now? Well, actually, how many do we have under the unit?
Yeah, I know, you're contracted.
You're there, you're on there. But your, your, um. Your companies included in the, in salaries and benefits.
Yes, in the office portion of, of, um, project works. Not even the water budget.
For great, for greater clarity, when we, um, uh, account for, uh, other work staff time. Um, uh, other work staff build a time sheet each week, and they have different buckets. They're working on super solid ways for water or what have you, so that's how we track it internally, based, uh, on where they are spending their hours.
What, what hours would go to solid waste?
It not, uh, a lot, uh, so we, when we go to this all, get to the solid waste, uh.
That's like eighty thousand.
Yeah, it was, in one year, there was, uh, like twenty twenty-one, there was zero, twenty twenty-two, there was like three thousand dollars, twenty twenty-three, nothing. Just depends if there's something needs to be done.
If we have to pick up at the beach on the weekends.
Okay, that kind of stuff. Now, is that the recycling, um, Saturday mornings as well?
No, no, because, uh, that doesn't cost any extra because they're there anyway.
Right.
Okay. Except right now, in the, in this window between mid-January and late March. They are coming in now because of solid waste, because we don't have to do beach checks.
Right.
Very often, they will book their time to another reason, it's not a mobile, um, inter-chats. Uh, probably residual management in all accounts. So solid waste. Public Works' solid waste contribution is very small.
Right. Okay, well, it's, it's, it was just interesting, it was in the solid, that's all waste area that I was trying to.
Then it would be, if they, if they had, oh, no, we'd stop breaking their gamepots, that would be, that, that would be much fun.
Sure.
It replaced several.
Um. So moving forward. For the maintenance budget, um, so probably a decrease there is, um, last year's budget completed thirty-five thousand, the first shore diver, um, intake, uh, risk warrant, clean. Uh, that's pretty prominent divers going in. Um, and so that wasn't sent last year, um, with our Public Works manager, we don't expect that unless there's an emergency or something that we would have to do for this year. Um, so that's kind of the main reason why it's kind of gone down, budget to budget from last year to this year.
So this is which line?
Maintenance. Uh, maintenance, and that's the primary reservoir intake, in, intake, clear, uh, cleaning.
Okay.
Material supply and equipment, um. Budget's basically the same as the past year, um, and, uh, consistent with twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two actuals. Twenty twenty-three, uh, didn't spend as much as was, uh, budgeted for, primarily with the water intake, uh, supplies, um. Uh, insulation or remediation, repair of E D sensors, uh, what have you. Um, but, uh, we are, um. Budgeting for that to be done in twenty twenty-four. Professional fees and contract services, consultants, um, increases, uh, so we allocated, uh, hydro, uh, hydrology work and hydrometric analysis. To, uh, the water departments, um, in last year, it was in Public Works. Um, and so that's the, uh, the reason for the increase there. Um, come, um, it was budgeted last year, the work wasn't, uh, performed, uh, and so we rebudgeted it to twenty twenty-four.
Sorry, Joe, is the hydrometric analysis, is this the, uh, U V C study?
It is the U V C study plus, and you add on, uh, utilizing people called Fathom Scientific. Um, to provide our own data on the flow rate in the creeks, uh, using.
Magic.
Magic, it's, it seems like magic to me, but it's amazingly, the, the number correlates very well to the number that we see through the plant, um, in periods of low flow. And that will, that will be, um, migrated straight to our SCADA system to give us an actual reading on. On the creeks, I, I don't know if it's come up yet, but you, you were facing a summer of record low flow and record high leakage, and, you know, it's a planning accordingly. So I, I really want to know what the creeks are doing, so that's why you see that line over there.
So this is to measure flow rates, so we have a real-time analysis and.
What's when?
Yeah.
Yeah, so how they do it, just for the interest is they, they have a pressure transducer in a pool above the intake, the, the, this pool's all out. Uh, with a radio connectivity, and then they are, they're currently producing a rating code, but the pool is so deep, that means a flow rate of X, and that's all, so.
Okay.
Okay. And that's included in. The number you said?
Ninety-seven.
Uh, your consultants.
Ninety-seven, three.
Yeah. I, I would just say that this COG number, Joe, that's really, that's part of the CapEx on, on the COG project.
About CapEx, yeah, so I can, uh, move that, move that from operation.
Yeah, we can, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think that, that can get a little bit more detail on it.
Exactly, I mean, I know, how would you know, so, yeah. We, we've been rejiggering maintenance versus CapEx, and, and this is actually a CapEx, uh, not an expenditure item.
Yeah. And then we also spent so many, we moved the survey, right?
Uh, not only that, we have preliminary designs, yeah, they are.
From the. There was a thirty-five for me.
Not requested by me, I don't know, it's, it's vestigial, the, the twenty-three budget's just been carried.
Do you want to? Mid the next, there's no ready, uh, so what is, uh, all spent that we reported, but, uh, I'll sit down with Carl and, um, tighten that number and do it together.
Yeah, I'm fairly sure I can say that we can take that out.
Okay, so wait, in the breakout here, I'm trying to natural on this leak detection. When you mentioned.
That.
I'm responding to my notebook.
Carl, are they initiating that leak detection before we replace that, uh, tank?
Yes, we started, we started this week, in fact, we just found, uh, we have a major leak on the Mag zone, almost a hundred thousand gallons more flow than we're expecting. Just found today, thirty-five thousand gallons. Not before it washed away somebody's driveway, unfortunately, but, uh, it was their service line. And they are currently running on a bypass from their neighbor until they can get it fixed. So, yes, is the short answer. Um. I think that might be the supplementals now.
Okay.
The ten years old, we'll find it.
All right, Joe. And.
Does that, the ones that means, I was telling you, might be annual operating costs.
Well, typically, we, we like to find the leaks because we know where we should be leaking, looking.
So this is just the added, yeah, it's one, one, it's one, because this is special here.
Okay, alright. Um, we, we do have, uh, an item in the CapEx for a, a new, more enhanced aqua phone. It's a thing that you put on the ground and, and this, but it's quite.
Uh, for salaries and benefits, John, consistent with the budget for twenty twenty-three, incorporating, um, expected, um, rate increases. Um, the difference between twenty-three actual and twenty-three budget is that we were short-staffed. Um, uh, accounting for, uh, various indicators there, so I, I sat down with our Public Works manager and. Say, oh, great, you're under budget for twenty twenty-three, and, uh, your response was, well, that's not great because you didn't have anybody working.
Some things didn't really be done.
So we have hired, um, an additional staff person in Public Works, we're expecting to hire, um, but the supplemental's a, a project manager and what have you.
So, councils.
So you have legs going, so. It's a eighteen percent increase.
The two sixty to three hundred?
On budget.
Well, three seventy-six to four oh eight.
Yes.
So a margin of the increase in the twenty twenty-four budget, so how the, uh, the, the labor model works, and, uh, again, twenty twenty-four is. So a margin of the increase in the twenty twenty four budget, so how the uh the the labor model works and again twenty twenty four is an estimate of the current portion. So that's why I kind of scrolled down to the next page there, the public work salaries by department.
Yeah, so it has a looking.
Right, so um we generally um what we see is that uh so we have a limited amount of staff. Um and a limited amount of hours for them to actually work. So generally, when we budget for public works um time. Um including incorporating um uh increase in in raise the important key or whatever um the contract agreement has. Um then generally, a whole um uh public works budgets are quite uh similar to the actual. Uh there is some variance in which department amounts get allocated to based on where um uh public works staff spend their time. Um and that's tracked in their time sheets. Um what for the twenty twenty four budget in total um is uh. Really uh consistent with the twenty twenty three budget um at which was nine hundred and eight thousand. Again, we only ended up in current costs of eight hundred and one thousand due to um. Reductions in staffing.
Six thirty seven, actually. Significant for the rest of the process.
So I should say, yeah. Uh and then last there's training professional development, which is required every year. How how is training coming on? Is we getting the certifications back?
Uh yes and no. Uh I don't know. Council's aware that um we are required by the Environmental Operator Certification Program, E O C P. To have designated staff certified to the level of our. Order distribution system and water treatment system and otherwise water treatment systems classifications. We're uh there were two distribution systems, level one um water systems, both of them, and a level one uh S T P, or otherwise water treatment. Uh we currently have those positions covered. Um the long term is that we need to bring some more staff on. So our new hire. Um was actually a little further along than I uh was expecting, so he's going to be certified uh to the right levels for the dis for the plants quite soon. Um. This is really just a a picking over budget that's done. Uh accommodate the need to bring at least one more person on our um designated. Water officer, uh water treatment. Whatever his title is. He's got two years left. Um and we have a runaway to that. Um which these certifications are.
Two years left before you leave this.
Before he's retired. That is expressed that it's already retired about two years.
It's great.
It's moving forward to parks. Um the twenty twenty four budget, the anomaly here um is my request for jet maintenance. Uh that would be briefly touched on. Jetty maintenance. We we briefly touched on that in the last meeting. Um and uh Carl may speak further to that as to.
Well, I can actually speak further is that unfortunately, the news is not great. I just almost it was the reason I played was talking to uh consultant. Um his proposed fees alone are forty three thousand dollars. Some of these are fees that are are needed to. Ease the concerns that uh federal and provincial partner um departments have about environmental degradation and and whatnot. Done right with the right uh E E P environmental. Something. Something but something like that. Um I can look it up on my phone, but I won't bother you with the details. Um you say E A P? Maybe C A P. E something. E, I've got E, E on it, which stands for.
Yeah, is that including engineering as well or?
That includes the engineering as well. He says quite that. As I said, I was just on the phone with him and I was rushing. Um. He says we may actually be able to not even need the engineering, which he has in there between ten and twenty thousand dollars. So um. That's just for the, let's call it the paperwork. Then this actual construction.
And you said it was forty two.
I'm sorry, so you're saying forty three, but possibly thirty three and possibly twenty three?
No.
With if no engineering?
No engineering, take off ten thousand because I didn't put that I planted the engineering at ten thousand, probably twenty thousand. Then there's the materials and and contracted to actually. And I think I mentioned last time, the the parent plan was that we actually have to take the jetty out for body. The only benefit to having one now is that it's it's sort of a grand part of the alignment that we're we're it's our jetty. He he is uh the the consultant actually checking on that spatter now. Uh give reasons slightly differently to our iron rhythm. But I'm pretty sure that we have jurisdiction in town to be out. Um so we are fully within our rights to. May maintain our jetty. Done correctly with this E. E blank blank.
Yeah.
Done correctly will also allow us to put these berms out in a place to start the division of beach. Which is how I plan this project to actually pay for itself. So that number that we see there uh is unfortunately maybe a little um a little light.
You know, we see which.
One seventy, one seventy two, five five four.
So we were at sixty three, nine fifty.
That's yeah, that's very, that's just the regular grass cutting and stuff.
Yeah.
As a reminder, I had that the 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 jetty in the primary.
Right.
We had twenty thousand from the previous year, which which somewhat meld into that. So it's really only an increase of eighty. The twenty thousand, if you remember, was for uh underpinning the wall of walls, which is.
Yeah.
Correctly done, this project will eliminate the need for that.
Yeah.
We hope. So so we're told, you know, we'll need an engineer to actually stamp that.
Did he give me a ballpark or he thought the uh construction costs could be?
No, and I don't want to guess in open meeting because, you know, that'll uh preload what quotes will come in at, but um. I don't think the the initial hundred thousand asked. Is going to be adequate, especially if we want to do these these underwater berms.
Sure.
Which will pay for themselves a and cash flow is not an issue, so I I I raise just we do do them. Also in here somewhere uh is a replacement for the um the dock. Joe will tell us where that is. Uh that was um thirty four, I think. That will also pay for itself over time because we want to have to take the dock in and out every year.
So Carl, you're saying this will pay for itself in in what respect in terms of slinging sand?
The slinging sand in the beach case, yes, and taking the uh the dock in and out, which we have to get Mercury Marine to do. Especially now that it looks like the marina parking lot will not be available to us uh to bring trucks and so on. Um. It will cost even more. I figure as much as ten thousand a term and there's two terms ev- every year.
So roughly, how much does the sand slinging cost us?
Eight thousand.
A year?
Hmm.
So you're looking at a very long amortization in terms of this being a benefit?
Sure.
Yeah.
So, you know, we don't product, but if we have the cash, why not utilize it? Because it's wallpaper and so on.
And the dock is in CapEx.
Oh, the docks in CapEx. That's right.
Right.
I'm sure.
If if we lose the vermin though and and with the king tides and so on and and the degradation that's happened in the last couple of years, if you lose that. We're going to lose the beach, which is going to be a significant cost, so it's.
Yeah, it's going to be. The consultation report is that we have to have the jetty.
Yeah.
Et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah.
It's sort of, you know, to protect the community, so.
Exactly, yeah. Yeah, I think you know, I think the initial beach part of the idea was to cap it as it as it sat, but that was a very different.
We talked about that. It's he says, don't do that. You know, these rocks that are in there are crazy, they're round, which is not gonna build structures, you need twirls. And he says typical rock that he would probably if there's a cost of engineering to specify are one meter rocks.
Yeah. Yeah, we we looked at this a year ago in January and the the condition of the jetty from last January to this January. It's been significantly.
Oh, no, I.
Totally support what you're saying, yeah.
Can make a Michael doing the beach party. Um. When would you do this, really?
Not now, critical. Uh. Certainly before next winter. Um but once, because we're ripping up the beach park, it would have to be done in in concert with the beach park renovation.
It had to be done at the same time.
Different contractor, different management.
But if you don't do it at the same time, well, before the beach park renovation, then you have to deal with bargains and it's going to cost you a hell of a lot.
Right.
So we know that. There is currently this vehicle access. Um it's potentially a mint.
Just to add, I wouldn't try to solve all of the construction details.
Yeah.
Otherwise, you're never going to look through your budget.
I'm just telling you that that number may need to uh increase to. Just to make around a little one nineteen.
I want to comment that that could qualify as pathways, as I understand.
To use.
Yeah, those, yeah, and and I'm wondering whether the the dock could even be considered a halfway out. Because it'll come from sort of that shoreline.
Possibly translate as well as the access ones.
Oh, that I'm not sure about that. I I think the measure referring to our current restricted reserves that require them to be spent on projects that. Provide equal or better access to the body of water.
Yeah, no, I I I was actually um. In discussions, I uh call was Scott Christie as well. Um. Mr. Black asked me to give him a call. Um he said that uh by all means that the jetty. The waterfront would easily qualify as pathways. And in my discussion with Translate, they said pathways connecting with the the village, not necessarily pathway only going to a bus stop. And they said, we're open to all pathways. So with that in mind, it gives us a little bit of freedom to.
Okay, that's used to me. So I heard the shuffle around. I don't really think about that.
Yeah, oh, that was.
Possibility, but.
Anyway, so I think that that'll sort of be how we can maybe piece the other grass perhaps.
Okay. Great. Although, as Joe just pointed out, the the transit, the full transit grant revenue is in the budget at the moment. The full three hundred and something thousand. What it gets spent on is another question.
Yeah. Sorry, Joe. Need call. Great, so um move on fire. Um the budget is uh twenty twenty four is a little bit less than twenty twenty three. Uh consistent with twenty twenty three um actuals and and the historical trend, you know, that respect. Um I don't really have anything significant speaking here other than um there is a supplemental request uh in our package uh for. We would.
Don't even know there.
Don't. There is uh there's nothing to draw your attention to at this moment and most of the supplemental request for the the next meeting. But generally on track with um I guess sort of actuals and a little bit of a decrease in prior's budget.
Question, uh under salaries and benefits, I see that we're still up sixty seven over the iteration we had two meetings ago. Um what's the explanation for that?
Um I in twenty twenty three actual?
Yes.
Yeah, we paid out the firefighter volunteers can pay out twice a year and so uh paid them on December.
Okay.
Um and if there's any specific questions, I'm I'm you have materials and then you can come back to me, but.
And budgeting, budgeting on the fire. Twelve percent less on budget on budget. Um and is that because? The fuel can't get fully staffed? Would they ever do?
Well, they can't. Um and also, um again.
So I mean, is that, did did you decide to make it match the actuals and not the budget or did the fire chief say he's in every speed?
This is in in place on the fire chief.
Yeah.
So this is the expectation that there will be less people on the ground?
Yes.
Okay.
So it's still more than the actual. We could shoot to the best. Well, it's about the same as the twenty one, twenty three.
Yeah.
I mean, I guess it's reasonable. But the the one sixty one is probably the ideal inflicted stabbing that we thought they needed, then we get it.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Um and so you have all the detail of lots of accounts, but there is.
It's a very free operational thing, but the the firefighters are paid up twice a year. And I'm just wondering whether it's feasible for them to be paid out more frequently, whether that would be in some way, some some kind of incentive where they're actually seeing. The payouts earlier. I don't know. I mean, we're looking for creative ways to to be attractive. Hmm. And it's it seems to me that that when when you kind of have a never never plan for being paid. That that's where's where you you're physically seeing income. I know I don't think it can be a major impact to the village. It's an operational thing. It's not a budget thing, but just um. I think maybe this all discusses the fire chief, it's whether that would be in any sense. But we're looking for for.
I think you'd appreciate that. He's always looking for ways to uh increase that volunteerism for the firefighting. Solid waste, uh just of the change of presentation from the previous topic, again, so much of the water, I just added. Uh a line here in the notes showing that it's always revenue expected at a five percent increase in user rates. Our current expenditures, so we would have a slight deficit of eleven thousand dollars. Um if we increased it. If in order to get that to zero. I I basically straight the revenues equal expenditures, no surplus of you, but a ten percent increase in user rates for solid waste. Like this not come huge dollars here. Um I believe it and then it amounted to about uh. Six dollars a house or something like that.
So, you know, you know, so you. So is the solid waste contract increased this year?
There is our uh increases. I so the budget did increase in some contract costs um are three percent per year. Um and the.
There's a few percent installation clause written in their content that we all uh said.
Okay, and it is rolled over.
It's rolled over.
And they express uh complete happiness with rolling it over worth of foreseeable. And I suggest that's a good deal.
She's fine, but yeah. That's good. Okay.
And.
Great job. Great job.
Right, so that's all.
So you know, wasn't following. We'll try to look at how we went to five percent. In bands.
So um the uh five percent increase for uh revenues. Um is uh based on our next act for uh recommended five percent increase in user rates for solid waste. Similar to last year with five percent.
And that'll raise to twenty one, seven sixty seven.
Correct. By lock, by here, we are for salaries and benefits.
Over going it. Oh, okay, it'll be five hundred.
So I moved on to uh these three one by law.
Um. Could I just go back to by law? We we had discussed earlier salaries and benefits.
Yeah, so the other books cost. Still very small.
Right.
So no significant changes here at all.
Right, okay, perfect, yeah. I just remembered to.
Sewer by law, similar um was uh uh. Typically have a new base of thousand based on a five percent increase in uh user rates. Uh expenditures, budgeted one hundred and seven thousand. Um which is a decrease in prior's budget. Um. It's a that way to get this is was approved, we would anticipate um a deficit certain cost.
What picture we have?
Seventy three. Ready for sure. Here's sewer.
So we jumped over by law?
We jumped over by law. Yeah.
He spoke very fast, but I watched.
That's right. About the coffee.
I missed it, yeah. So can we go back to by law?
Yeah. Is by law?
What is the basis for? So there is a benefit of the model.
Uh don't we incorporate a five percent increase approximately um in salaries and benefits for members of Q B. That's been consistent in the last three years. Um.
So this so this this budget, then I think this is a question from CEO. So this budget is based on what we did last year and on previous years.
Right.
Okay. So we improve the budget as it is, plan to change how we do by law, would then we. Adjust the sum of it under this budget? Or do you intend to do that now before the next budget?
Do uh. Mary, are you going to go through with the chair on this, or?
Yeah, go through your thoughts. You you have a plan. I think they'll break it up.
Sure, so the that staff report at Rocky Council. Whenever that was, I lost track of my size. What uh says sort of set out a plan or not plan, sort of an approach to. Take the existing budget and reallocate it in a way to. Provide a different sort of scope around provision of service. It was not meant to have any substantive effect on the budget. So that same structure would apply whether through this budget or the proposed budget. So that same structure would apply, whether it be this budget in front of the proposed budget in front of you. Or the one, well, last year's, it would have no material effect. It's about how do we shuffle the deck utilizing the same budget, not increase. Unless, of course, council decides to to change the service by law and add this or that, and then that's that that's not contemplated. But certainly, something that council could choose to consider if it's so generous.
Yeah, so I think on the outside of this meeting, I think we need to work through that and see if we can get the revised plan within the same budget. That'll be the service. Um, okay. Right.
Just by the bylaw, where is the parking meter cost in here?
We pass, um, I can find this, it's not in bylaws and law books.
Because it's not insignificant, it's two thousand and one.
Yeah, there's. Broken that out for you in your materials.
Okay, that's fine.
There's a note specifically identifying broker.
Yes.
We've got the software costs.
With the software costs in here, the amount of meters?
The meter cost and the meter cost, so then by those separately, for Precise Link and Broker, it's broken out in detail in the notes, so. I just can't remember exactly which note it was, but it is there. You can see exactly how he paid for broker and or.
So then what's this in there too, that you're going to eighteen thousand dollars?
Software. Parking software costs.
So there's, uh, we got.
Page thirty two, note two.
Sorry, I'm just getting a little lost here, but back and forth, thirty two.
Eighteen thousand eight forty nine.
Yeah, that's broker. Broker being, that's the software.
The credit card connection, connecting software.
Uh, the software, yeah, that the byline officers use.
We need to talk about on this model, it will always be the same place, right?
Yeah.
Uh, because we. I mean, discussed it with the CIA, yeah, but I'm I'm thinking that we can potentially go to an old virtual no meter app only pay parking model next year, this year, this time. Uh, that of course requires connectivity in all our parking areas, which I'm working with the carriers on persistuously. But I haven't discussed the details yet.
Well, thanks, if I could, there's a bigger discussion in council needs to have with our department.
Yeah.
Uh, we touched on it very briefly, but it's the notion that there's an inordinate amount of staff time consumed with chasing up parking fractions. And so council needs to know that, needs to know the cost to to the organization for doing that and consider whether or not. There's a sweet spot that is a fine amount, not to be a deterrent, but not so much that everybody that gets a ticket is going to to contest it. And that Marina's job switches from deputy C A O to file law enforcement ticket reconciliation, so. Stay tuned, sort of thing, that's.
So we we had that discussion, we had that discussion every year for the last twenty years, because all was starting with explosion in government, right? And the town of us, they'll be coming, they're playing the lines day. So we've been dealing with it, reading with it every year, every year we revise that plan. And it was normally started with staff submitting to us a report from last year, what worked, what didn't work with all the numbers and then council there's sort of applying on this. Every year it's been changed, including the fee starting, as one one honestly discussion, as you suggested, around parking. Either enforcement of part, which might be on fellowship, and tends to be ninety percent of where they spend the time. So we do that, we had that nice, nice suggestion, we should do it again, agreed, we said, but it's not, it's not something we, council is not, we look at it every year.
Yeah, no.
From the next five wasn't suggested.
Just certain that these.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we've got some hangover from COVID and so on issues there.
We have things that are difficult to go away. Starting with COVID.
So new normal, we can tighten up on this and get a and get a holistic picture as as you suggest.
Okay, yeah. So the the cost for will end up here rather than in the.
We'll see, we'll we'll see where they need to be too, because as Noel says, this parking is on the rise, but it's a lot.
Thanks, so if I could, I would not lose sight of the bigger picture here, I would not imagine the details like this, the money's accounted for. Switching out from from over here to over there, that's just a minor string thing. I would suggest you don't get hung up on that.
Sure.
I would keep it, your your consideration at a higher level to make sure you're comfortable. The goal here is what's on the table, what's off the table, and and what does, what remains on the table? What does that look like as a as a as a tax increase? And are you comfortable that is a tentative, a first stab at identifying a number? Yeah, that's going to be tempered by whatever happens to the supplemental discussion that that and you'll use back in core budget. They revisit that, change the numbers, who knows? But the primary goal tonight is, is if we can try to nail down what what your preliminary appetite is for the targeted these service levels. And that target, tentative target, that sequence.
All right, y'all. Moving on to page thirty three sewer, pretty much a very consistent class here, it represents a five percent increase in sewer user rates. Uh, main change is a reduction in the maintenance budget, uh, which is in note two. Um, and with this sewer line inspections that were budgeted in twenty twenty three, we're not anticipating that for twenty twenty four, so that's the mark.
So is this telling that. Sewer expenditures are twenty thousand more than already.
Right.
Then it's not part of the community and none of us are very impacted, but shouldn't it pay for itself?
Should, so I did do a sensitivity analysis, it was on the existing budget, um, that would represent about ten percent increase. That'd be great, it's not five percent.
We'll bring it to break even.
Break even.
Yeah, I'll also just mention that not this year, because we're out of time, but next year we are going to have to line all the manhole barrels. Because they are jetting water into our S T P whenever it rains. And that's not going to be expensive.
No.
But it's better than losing the opponent for the way to treat them.
If I may, one other thing to consider in far as break even. Um, there are some items that, look at the twenty twenty three actuals, that will cost, we're we're budgeted at a hundred twenty one thousand, that's what we taxed for, we only spent fifty five thousand dollars. So there may be a transport in the serves to offset the expected decrease in the current year, if we leave it at five percent.
Now, they're awesome, they're paying for the plants as well.
Oh, I'm sorry, there is one item missing there, that's the.
I would say.
I would say so thirty six thousand, so you go with ten thousand dollars. Apologies.
We still got forty thousand to play with out that out of the budget.
For the council?
Add the thirty six back to the fifty five.
Yeah.
It's subtracted for the one twenty one.
From last year.
From last year's budget, yeah.
The difference between last year's budget and this year's budget is partly regarding the maintenance side.
Yeah.
Because we don't have to respond this.
That's. I mean, it's just a philosophical, that's not the right word, it's more operational, philosophical, but. Utility fee should pay for the cost of utilities, whether it's sewer or water or um solid waste. Um, unfortunately, it's only one council that's directly impacted by that, she's not here tonight, the rest of us aren't, because we're also responding. But I I mean, it should pay for it, you should tax, the utility rate should reflect that.
Yes.
Not to mention investment funds for the future.
The problem with how we're going to, the the pay and the maintenance of those facilities, which might be maintained over the years and not in budgeted for. Is going to be painful discussion, because these people are already digging for the replacement of the water, you complain, that's a long way, they're still paying that off. My my ten year plan.
Separate parcel tax.
Separate parcel tax, yeah.
Yeah.
The operation, I think it should be whatever it is, needs to cover it.
How long is there, does that pay off on for the plant?
Yeah, eight years ago, I think.
Eight years ago.
Yeah.
Then there was an option to pay it all in the land sale, but I think, I mean, handful.
Yeah, well, we are, but it's for interest, so why wouldn't you take it on?
Yeah. Oh, that's fair enough. That's just that they they are paying, they're paying that as well, I mean, it's it's not represented here, but. Just seems like it's a.
What would the sewer fee, what would this budget represent in terms of per account sewer fee?
So.
For average house, because this is progressive tax, obviously.
So we're on sewer. Sewer currently, we're, so if we increased it to ten percent. Um, we'd be approximately break even, and that would be represent, so eight percent increase in sewer user rate would increase revenues by eight hundred and twenty one dollars. Um, and that's about each one percent increase, that represents nine dollars and fifty five cents per home.
So ten percent increase in my books. Yeah, I mean, I I know that it's it's not repairing itself and it's not getting younger. So I would actually like to run a break even every year. We did underspend last year, but that's a reserve for something else, manhole barrel lining. Or the next time we have to do a smoke test, I mean, the reason that we're doing smoke tests in sewers is to try to find how this water is getting in, that's over the treatment farm. So, um. Can I just point out though, that the current thinking, that admin thinking is that we would in fact like to issue utility bills separately to property tax bills, like soon. So.
That's we always do them.
Yeah, well, there was some consideration of putting them in the same effort, but it's just not feasible at this stage. Um, and probably better from a public relations standpoint. So we need to get the 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 water and sewer numbers nailed down soon, soon.
Um, if I may, so I I done an analysis for a percentage of bylaw increase for each water, sewer and solid waste. Currently, with the five percent increase, we have a slight surplus in the water at twenty two thousand dollars. Um, over expected costs. Um, the council, their discretion, keep that and build towards building up the surplus in water, and then we have a lot of water progress coming down the pipe. However, another consideration could be that you reduce the increase in water by. If you reduce from five percent to three percent, it would be completely break even, and that's a decrease in per home tax, user rates of thirty six dollars per home. Um, that would offset increases, let's say, call it about ten percent in sewer and solid waste. Uh, and ease the pain effectively, have everybody break even on any departmental side. And he provided a full of analysis for you, so you can see the numbers in that separate email. Okay, so going down to council. Um, the budgets proposed for twenty twenty four is consistently with twenty twenty three and twenty twenty three actual. At this time, moving the numbers around effectively, we've reduced professional services, or actually monster down and effectively just a contribution to the next round of elections, or replenishing our reserves. And then budgeting for council attendance to U B C M, the annual meeting next September, so.
So if I could. That conference section is not necessarily for U B C M, because there's the rural mainland L G M A chapter, there's U B C M, there's various municipal events. Uh, so it can be, it's a council description, how do you want to use that, whether that's enough. Council needs a strategy regarding to how there's significant value associated with attending these, these conferences. The pragmatic, with a with a task based, I mean, with some of the lines based, not pragmatic to send over all of council, the council needs to turn their minds, your minds. Who should be going to what conferences? And sort of have that, even as some sort of working policy, so that staff who be ahead of us knows how much that budget and knows. Who's attending what, they start registering, pre bill and so on and so forth, so getting the nodderd, all of these things, so not necessarily a discussion from today. Uh, unless, of course, you want to look at that number up there, but it's a it's a tactical discussion that council should really have to have at some point soon.
Okay, let me just come in the discussion, the number that's up there. Um, based on what we started out to use discussion where everyone should go to these things, because it was a benefit, it was a statement that was made. Um, that budget is relatively right.
Of course they.
Right, and it's under budgeted by by orders of management, in my opinion, but it is orders of management more than we ever budgeted before. And just by simple math, the last conference that two members went to was thirty six hundred dollars. If all of us went to that, it would be nine thousand dollars. It was near that, you know, paying all U B C M, U B C M is in Whistler, that's going to cost more. So this idea of we're all going to go to these things because there's a benefit, that number needs to be fifty sixty thousand dollars for my calculation. So in previous councils, one person went, that person, you know, to say why they wanted to go and then go and report for anyone else. But I think we do need to have a discussion, but we're not voting here for what people intend to do, or started to do, in the closing moments, so. We need to find out what that number would be if everyone was to go, which is their desire, and that's the start of the discussion, but at eighteen grand.
If I could.
Uh huh.
Uh, no, it's not, and I I. There there's not a one size fits all solution, there are benefits for all accounts of going to the U B C M, for sure. There are also some disadvantages, but it means that nobody goes to legal chapters. The local chapters. Was now going, some people were following resolutions to the local chapter, which then ended up going to U B C N, so we're so sort of spreading, spreading it out a little bit, tactically is a good way to go. There may be an occasion a year where the U B C M has something particularly significant. There may be a number of issues that Lions Bay is facing, for instance, and there may be value in having the ministerial meetings with all of council. Uh, on an issue A or B or C, I wouldn't say that necessarily applies every year. But there needs to be, you know, we all have to be sort of adaptive to the changing circumstances. So the question is, that's not a precise number, the question is, what's the right number? So there's, if if you don't, if it's in there and you don't use it, no harm, no foul. But if if there's not enough in there and council, that the community would really benefit by attending this or that, there isn't enough money, that is problematic.
Well, the reason why I say the numbers really light is because it's not just the L G L M A and U B C M group that went to, we're ready. Three council members, at least, expressed interest in going to the L G L A forum or whatever it's called, which is another one, I don't know how many of these there are, but they're, it's in Brandy Park, if everyone went. Right, it's a bit subjective for clarity, the local one is four to three hundred and twenty, so so the cost is going to obviously, as you appreciate, change depending on Richmond. Or Whistler, Richmond, people can drive, Whistler may be less, so so that'll change.
The the L G L A is a sort of a local government training opportunity, the other two are political conferences. Where you where you rub shoulders with ministers and ministerial staff and various other things. Uh, so council, yeah, needs to figure out which, which which of the ones that you should be shooting for. Uh, as I say, but they're separate, L G L A, U B C M.
So wait, so the L G I in training?
Isn't training, L G L A is.
Would that be better staff, sort of?
It's only for a lot of officials.
Gave some recommendations.
Oh, I see.
As opposed to, I mean, it sounds like everyone would love to participate in, as many of these are possible, and maybe you could tell us which ones are worthwhile, and whether we should send a whole contingent or just one or two.
So my recommendation would be to set aside a future community, a whole, that's about an hour, hour and a half discussion, to sort of debate. How best to apportion use, what's coming down the pipe, and this can be all of council going to Whistler, maybe less attractive to council if council feels that, and so doing. Nobody gets to go to the L G panel. nobody gets to go to the L G P pal, pal and.
L G.
Yeah. Can remember that.
Little bit of maybe.
L G P. Yeah, no, so it's, it, I mean, it's, that's going to be a dynamic discussion, but it's, it's a bigger discussion than what we could have covered.
So I'm glad we're talking about this here. Uh, I mean, I agree that ten thousand looks like a lot, but it's actually probably going to be way more since people are already signing up for conferences. And if that continues, we ought to be realistic for the public as to what we're proposing to spend here. But as to budgeting, I just want to go back to twenty twenty three. How is it that we budgeted two hundred and fifty dollars and forty six hundred dollars was spent? And how was that approved? I mean, I think this was Mayor Berry and Counselor Browton attending what, the U B C M? And so my question is, how is it that that was paid out if it was unbudgeted?
Would you rather no one go to that conference? Is that what you, you were?
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm asking how it was paid out when it was unbudgeted? Under what authority was forty six hundred dollars paid out when two hundred and fifty dollars was budgeted? I don't recall it ever coming to council and anyone saying, hey, we'd like to go, it'll cost so and so much. And yet it's been paid out. So under what justification would that paid out?
Is that what you're saying? You, you, you would have preferred no one went?
I'm asking under what justification that was paid out if it was unbudgeted? And if there is no justification for it, I'll just finish up by saying, then those monies should be compensated back to the village because they were an unapproved spend. Certainly weren't approved at council. And that's for one event, as I recall, was that the U B C M? Yeah, so that's forty six hundred dollars spent by two members of council, unbudgeted, unapproved. Um, I don't know how it got approved.
Forty six hundred.
I see forty six twelve here.
Yeah, no, I see that as well.
Yeah.
But that wasn't all the U B C M, I don't, what else was there?
I think it was the U B C M. So here's my question, um, it never came before council for approval. I don't know where or how it got approved. So would the two members who ran up this bill be kind enough to pay it back to the residents?
If I may. Um, there was additional room in twenty twenty three, there were no costs incurred for professional services and then added three thousand dollars. So that was taxed for, um, and so in lieu of engaging professional services, um, a portion of that is applied to, uh, conventions and conferences.
So money was pulled from one area to, to make up for this. Yeah, it seems, it seems like a bit of fuzzy math to me.
I agree, I agree. It shouldn't be markets.
For drawing the. Counselor Ryder, are you planning to go to, are you putting your hand up to go to conferences this coming year? Because you've, you've been asked many times to attend various, uh, council, council meetings, those emails have come out, you've attended nothing.
I, I'd be more interested in getting an answer to my question, I mean, to these and representing the village. Yeah, if it's budgeted and done properly, but if it's not, I won't. So I'm just asking, my question still stands, will you two recompense the village for the costs that are unapproved? Well, I think he.
So we represent the village and Mr. Chirkoff explained that there was allocation there.
But there was.
So, so you're not willing to pay back this unbudgeted expense?
Mr. Blackwell.
So if I could, uh, just return council's attention to the budget for you. Uh, this is a matter of concern to council that I recommend you deal with it in council context. But right now we're here to discuss the budget and staff are waiting for council's direction on this budget.
Sure.
Okay.
One more question in there. On the election, uh, Joe, on number five, I see that we have in the twenty twenty two actual thirteen and change. Now that, by my math, is a twenty five thousand dollar drop from the iteration we had two meetings ago. What's the explanation for that?
Uh, I don't think, so the total costs were approximately, um, I can break that out, uh, yeah, uh, and then, um, that Mr. Chirkoff, I, he, uh, so there was a reserve for, um, election. The by-election was an unexpected cost and it was, uh, it's been over budgeted, so we used reserve funds to bring it down to what the budgeted costs. And then the sixty five hundred dollars in the twenty twenty five budget, or twenty twenty four budget, it's replenished that election budget for the next round of elections.
I understand the replenishing, uh, rationale, but I'm just wondering why the twenty twenty two actual was dropped twenty five thousand from.
Twenty twenty two?
Yes.
Oh, um, I can.
Two versions ago, we had, I think, twenty five thousand dollars more in that column.
Twenty twenty two.
That was, that, that's what my note is here.
Uh, I can take a look for that.
Oh, thank you.
I know one last comment on, on this page before we get further.
Yeah, that's all right.
Um, so. Counselors doing training, there should be a training line, there isn't a training line, yes, I don't, we budgeted that for, it shouldn't be staff training. There's no budgeting at all. Um, and likewise in conventions, I think, whatever we budget for something, if we're not, if we're doing something that's not budgeted for, we should bring it back. We shouldn't, you say, yeah, let's find some money somewhere else it's paid for, a great market on it, just keep things clear and explain. So they have a training line, they have a conference line, and they have revised numbers, and they have a discussion. I'll see my training line. Thank you.
Well, I suspect that that is simply a convenience, we're training, conferences and conventions are all locked together in one amount, you're one under one. Entity, because there's always training, like for instance, U B C M is as much sort of dealing with political issues as it has, as it is about training, the training. So there's a lot of gray in regard to that. That said, the only, there, there are training specific things, so council, we shouldn't see that broken out. I don't think that that's a, Mr. Chirkoff, is that an issue too? Is a problem, I don't know, include another line item that's specific to training?
Um, not at all.
Um, knowing again, though, that there's going to be gray, right? Some of these, these conferences are half training, half conference.
Just, just for, for clarity.
Sure, I, I thought I was, I heard, there's another budget line for training somewhere else, the likes of council training, I thought this would you say?
No, okay, I don't, I don't believe so.
Um, I know this is, uh, this would represent, um, what you're speaking to as far as training is lumped into this line item. What will you view, um, I, in, in the presentation of this budget is that, uh, capital, attended events, um, are effectively training for council and developing their expertise and relationships with the, uh, local government community. Um, in other, uh, but the areas, arguments, there are separate lines for like specifically, uh, depend, of course, here's my, of course, here's my. Cost.
Hey, Joe. Um, moving on to.
Sorry, one last, one last, uh, council, um, I couldn't recall the salary, certainly not that. Council's generation scope and whatever you want to call it is, is based on the C P I, C P I. Um, but it doesn't seem to be reflected here.
Um, if I may, um, then, uh, there would be, uh, uh, in one tweet, um, it, uh, should actively go up by about three percent as the, um, uh, uh, expected C P I.
Then three percent, that's true.
Uh, for the full year, three to four percent, uh, the three to four percent, that was like six percent. Um, so.
Mr. Blackwell, thank you, this is a really important issue beyond just council. Uh, and this is going to be a broader discussion, if you know what I mean, it's going to happen, happen. Uh, there may well be an emphasis to look at the C P I and rely on the C P I from twenty one, two and three, which is completely distorted. So when we were looking, if we want to have a more accurate measure of what we should be, uh, uh, baselining, that sort of thing too, we should expand that out to ten years, a ten year average. Because if we only look over the last three years, the C P I has been enormous and not, not true.
I would agree with you on staff and other, other costs, but we have a Bible that says council gets C P I.
Yeah, I'm sort of trying to speak quickly.
So council doesn't give you the design, the time to, you know, we have to take it in, it's linked to C P I instead.
They donate it to the staff, huh? You don't know that one.
So, moving on to emergency services. Um, so we have a budget that, um, is just slightly under twenty twenty three actual and a twenty three budget reflective of the, uh, three year trend line for actuals. Um, there is a supplemental that you have in your package to review for our next meeting regarding, uh, proposed increase in professional fees and contract services.
Is it, there's a supplement? Okay.
That was authored by, um, our emergency program coordinator.
So I'm not, okay, so it's just.
Planning this relates to, um, the.
And you just pulled in a minute to just see.
Sure, yeah.
Because I, I feel better. And professional fees and services, so why are the professional fees and services gone up twelve, twelve and a half percent?
Um, that is estimated, if I may. That is estimated, um, on, uh, discussions with the emergency program manager. Um, it, uh, may be actually a little bit under what the request is, but I would like to, to review the supplemental requests uh, provided by the emergency program manager. Uh, there are two specifically that relate to professional fees.
Yeah, I saw that, okay. And then the supplemental, what you're using, those supplementals is another S, another five thousand as well.
Yes, yes, so I, this was just basically, uh, we had a budget, eight forty one thousand, forty two thousand, last year, call it, budgeted forty, so increased it to forty five, next estimate. Um, that being said.
Okay, so this is just a basement based on how many hours you might vote?
Yes.
Okay.
Planning, uh, for building with, um, twenty twenty three actuals were less than previous years because we didn't have a building inspection for a period of time. Um, and so the twenty twenty four budget primarily increases respective salaries and benefits and, um, that, uh, generally approximately twenty point one actuals. Um, and twenty twenty two actuals, um, slightly increased for innovation, that's, uh, our expectation of what, um, a full time building inspection would cost.
Sorry, Joe, that's a full time building inspector?
Well, I should say as, um, as your brother.
As we currently have.
Building inspection for the whole year.
Yeah.
Go to Mr. Blackwell. So, yeah, draws council's attention that even though it's revealing this is planning, we should probably actually change that name. But you may want to consolidate building and planning, it's called building and planning. And what I would draw your attention to is council's really not putting anything aside for any future O C P update or zoning by law update. Both of those two, two items together will be easily a hundred thousand dollars. So you can wait until you need an update and then try to figure out where you're going to pull a hundred thousand dollars from. Or you can start putting just a little bit of money aside, uh, into what is inevitable. So it's not, you'll get such a sticker shot when it comes time to do it. And it's no time soon, but now's the time to start thinking about that.
Well, we can wait till the problem three insists we do it, not by giving us a grant so they can pay for it.
Yeah. I would caution the council about, I can't, still trying to, one would be the case. One, you have someone down with a Facebook grants. It's a problem, but. But no.
Um, just before we move on to, um, uh, Blackwell's point, um, if you would like to, if it's council's interest to build up a reserve, build up the line item uh, for future O C P costs, um, all of these, um, reserve twenty thousand dollars or budget different twenty thousand dollars each year to build it up. Um, uh, do you have a hundred thousand dollars that you need for five years? Uh, that each year that would require, um, approximate about one point seven percent, uh, tax increase. Yeah, because one percent tax, there's seventeen thousand.
Blackwell, yeah, thanks, so to be clear, I have it, especially for C P's, zoning by law, but any other planning study, density studies, et cetera. But I wouldn't try to build it up that fast, maybe, because there's an appetite, you may want to just throw a thousand or two thousand at it every year. You're not going to have enough when it comes time, but you're going to have some. And so it will shave off some of the sticker shot, which is better than having to fund the whole thing right out of the gate. So you don't have to worry about necessarily building it up in five years to, to the tune of some hundred thousand dollars, but you should think about, contribute something to that.
Well, a thousand's insignificant, I mean, it's, we're basically doing nothing, right?
Other than a placeholder, really.
Yeah.
Reminder. Yeah. I mean, I, I would support putting a placeholder in there of a thousand dollars just to, you know, keeping in mind that we're going to, it, it will be something comes down the road. But, um. Mr. Blackwell. So Joe, I would suggest you increase the, you increase the number of things here, add a line item, call it planning studies. And then council will know specifically what that money was for, professional fees would be for anything, but, uh, planning studies or just studies. Uh, council will know specifically what areas to undertake, sort of growth management questions and so on.
Okay. And that, that is our last department, uh, so we, uh, and that rest of the package relates to both cap requests, which we'll be going through in our next session along the budget supplemental discussion. Um, if there, um, are any lingering questions, um, or, uh, that we, um, I guess I, I'll, I'll ask, uh, members of the, of the committee, um, is there anything in particular you'd like to discuss right now before we, uh, close the meeting? Um, and if there's something that pops up in the back of your mind later, you can directly contact me and I can provide a direct response to all of it.
Mr. Blackwell. Well, rather than closing the meeting, I would ask council, are you ready to sort of deliver even more, where you, where you want this budget to land? Um, you just talked about the science studies, uh, it's all well and good, it'll be on the line item, but you should provide some direction on whether or not you would put any funding toward that, and still how much. That could be zero, in which case you just have a line item, they could be whatever, but to the extent you can, if you have some time like this meeting, you can put them where you want to land with regard to, but adding subtracting or deleting any of these line items. Uh, and then ultimately deciding upon an ultimate preliminary core budget number.
So, correct. Yeah, we have a queue, you have a line item here for new spending in contract services at ten and a half thousand dollars. In the note below, it talks about slow assessments and survey, and I think that's the wrong description somehow, or what's in the wrong packet. So, so what did, what, what do we foresee that ten and a half thousand dollars would be spent on?
Page forty one.
Uh, on page forty one.
See, it's on the screen.
That was, uh, carried forward from, uh, prior year and then twenty twenty one had a signature, and twenty twenty two. Um, uh, twenty twenty one was, uh, there's a housing, you say that.
Oh, that, that was all the end funded stuff, the housing needs assessment and so on.
Uh, that was, uh, that was in the descriptions that were carried forward in previous years, um, there is a, a desire to reduce or eliminate. Um, happy to have that discussion and problem.
I don't think we have any, any of those activities planned for this year. I don't think we, you know, anyone was planning to do one, so I would suggest you really have a ten and a half thousand dollar budget.
So the question becomes, then for this question, right? Looking at this, the question then becomes, does council want to roll this over from year to year, so rather than setting it at ten thousand or whatever? Every year, you want to add that much to the budget every year, so it increases. And cap it, you don't have to worry about it capping it in your term, but capping it at some hundred thousand, whatever it ends up being. Um, rather than leaving it, even ten thousand isn't going to buy anything in terms of consultancies, other than a couple of pro calls. Uh, so what does ten thousand do? I would say essentially it's no value having, but if you add to that ten thousand, I think there's sort of a tentatious theory. So potentially you're going to start accumulating enough that you're going to have resources to start undertaking the necessary studies.
Well, I need to see some data on what, what did our last O C P review cost us? I mean, I mean, I'm assuming there are different ways to do this. You can get in some gold plated consultants who will, as you say, uh, cost a hundred thousand dollars just to get out of the gate, but um, how much did our last O C P? I mean, I think I'd want to see some data on that, I think there are probably different ways to do this. And that would inform how much we budget.
So as a consultant who has written countless proposals for O C P updates and zoning bylaws, being a planning director, having reviewed many proposals for O C P. I can tell if you're kidding me, so, so City Bank Group, it will be million dollars plus. Community of this size for a company got a full O C P review. You probably look at sixty thousand for a zoning bylaw, minimum of forty thousand dollars. Uh, can you get somebody less? Probably, are you going to have a viable O C P? No, you won't, you'll have. You won't, you'll have some Frankenstein. So those, that's what the marketplace is telling you.
Well, I'm pleased to hear that you've benefited from providing these services at those costs, but that doesn't mean they have to cost this much. And, and I would want to be very cautious with, with the dollars on something like this. I mean, and just see what it has cost in the past, what, what is possible.
Our, our previous O C P was, was done with a lot of volunteers, but from the village. It was a fraction of that cost.
Yeah, right.
That's the way it was done at that time. For the answer to your question was, I can't, it was ten or fifteen thousand. Um, but there are a lot of volunteer input.
Yeah, so I would not want to see us stacking, uh, uh, an account with a whole bunch of money. And then there's a built in expectation that we're going with. Uh, consultants, I, if we've done it that way in the past, presumably we could do that again.
Could we look at the professional fees and contract services? Um, the breakdown is a lot of that right now. We're, we're saying that it's slopes, slope analysis and I, 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 I remember the note that I looked it up right now.
If I may, um, the, I prevent that, the, and I'm to finish off the thought with account private. So the, the content of soul assessment survey and greenhouse gas assessments relates to the actual five thousand five hundred and thirty four dollars that were spent in twenty twenty three. Um, that, that was, uh, that kind of related to the actual invoices that I saw being booked in that account. Um, the twenty twenty three budget was five thousand dollars higher. It approximated the twenty twenty two budget. Um, adjusted for not having a housing study and then twenty twenty four is effectively carried forward twenty twenty three. Mr. Black, just back to the, um, the O C P, would that conversation that was had the audit and finance committee, um, that, that you were suggesting that the community get together and have. Have discussions on a long term plan, would, would that, that crossover with the O C P and, and could we harness some of those volunteers? Uh, you know, in advance of, uh, an O C P, if that was needed, uh, I'm not suggesting it is needed, but. But we definitely need some strategic planning for the future and, and you were suggesting that we need to look. Uh, closely at the vision and, and what this village would like to see and. And reach out to the residents. So do you see a crossover on that? And, and perhaps that would, uh, would shape some of the thoughts on, on O C P eventually?
Um, so the, the, the community, so, so O C P ultimately is owned by the key. Um, the goal of O C P writing is to involve as many voices from the community as possible. Uh, but I have never seen a volunteer group by an O C P. I've never, I've seen, I've seen, I can't even tell you. And it's very clear which O C Ps are going to be effective and which O C Ps are not going to be effective. Uh, I had a mission this yesterday. I can tell O C Ps that are written by consultants that have never worked in local government. And have never had to implement any O C P policy. Now, those O C Ps are easy to identify. Um, expecting a community of volunteers who know nothing about local government, know nothing about policy implementation. Know relatively little about the community charter, know very little about community planning and all this other stuff. We can't absolutely impractical expect that you don't get what you need. You'll get something. But you won't get what you need. So with regard to sort of figuring out what Lions Bay's future needs to be with, with respect to. Uh, what I would refer to as a sustainable financial future. And embedded rolled into that discussion is growth management, infrastructure management. How the O C P chooses to interface with those or not. Uh, you know, this, that is not a lack of like thing. It's, it's sort of this moving mixture of one thing informing the other. Uh, I would, as I think I mentioned yesterday, I would caution against over reliance on O C P. O C P is only a policy document. It's not a regulatory one. And so, so council is not obliged to follow anything in O C P. Uh, that said, council cannot make decisions that conflict with, with policies in the O C P. Even though many local governments do that anyway, you're not supposed to. Um, an O C P is, is intended primarily, primarily to be a visionary document. Uh, provide general guidance around where the communities, the community wishes its future to go. It's not designed to answer the deep questions on any topic. Um, those are, those are subsequent studies, subsequent deep dive reports. So, um, you can't, you can't expect the most appreciated to, 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 to provide that. You can't over, uh, over rely on an O C P. If you're trying to answer these questions. It's about, I know, so managing the future growth and a sustainable, naturally in the words for local government, it's very much like weaving a tapestry. Meaning that tapestry weaves together lots of different threads, threads of different colors. Those three threads of different colors are things like O C Ps. Uh, 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 infrastructure obligations, financial obligations, changing demographics within the community, changing demographics. Outside of the community, house prices, the economy, all of these are, are individual web, uh, we, uh. Threads that weave together in the tapestry that creates this image of Lions Bay as it does West Van, Burnaby or any other place. So it's a long answer to your question, but it's a complicated. It's a complicated thing and your O C P can't.
Okay, O C P aside, uh, just leading a community, oh, definitely just, is it something you've done in the past or, or in yesterday's, uh, audit and finance committee, you were suggesting that. Uh, some of those committee members should step forward and try to lead this process or have you done that in the past? And is that something you could guide? Uh, the counselors at the table in, in a process?
Well, absolutely. So, I mean, if council was minded to take, uh, a deep dive into sort of a long term. Reflective study on where the community is going versus where it would like to go, say next twenty to thirty years out. Uh, there needs to be sort of a, a, a tactical process or a plan to, to, to facilitate that development. So council would then need to tap staff on the shoulder and say, this is what we want to do. Develop an architecture to deliver this. That includes, you know, meetings, when, who, task forces. Key decision points, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Bring that to us so we can look at that, consider it. And then if council is minded to move forward on whatever the outcome of that was, then we implement it. And, you know, there's lots of moving pieces with regard to how that would roll out, but, you know, some of the big. The obvious issues that face applied to the latest, that you've got big infrastructure obligations. Another component of that is, um, the regulations associated with, with septic fields and so forth constantly change. I've said before, I, I would be wise for Lions Bay to contemplate the sewer regulations changing in a location like this. Such that at some point Lions Bay will not be permitted to have. Uh, septic systems anymore will have to go to a formal, a formal sewer system. Because of the potential for, for leachate contaminating the marine environment, failing septic system. So. And, and on and on and on and on. These are really big discussions that the community needs to have. I've. Been involved in that for a lot of my career. Uh, the C B R D, we had major discussion about water security. Um, C B R D is quite a large, can be one of the largest regional districts in the province. Um, and we had to figure out a way to convey water across the region as well as dealing with sewer and so forth. So, you know, I. This is a part of my career. All right. But I'm wondering, if we could, I, I, I see a missing piece here and that's sort of the big picture. And, and whether it's long term planning or whatever, and I'm wondering, I'm not, I'm not, I don't have an appetite to change this budget. Um, the total budget number, but I, but I'm thinking if professional fees, contract services. If in addition to that, there's an additional line, line item, just called, uh, long term planning or something like that. I'm not sure. I'm just trying to capture the ideas here. And, and moving two thousand dollars out of professional fees and contract services. Into that line item, that, that seems to me like it would become a placeholder and, and generate the, the discussion. That, that we do live in, that we need to look at the bigger picture as well. Uh, but we need to be less reactive. Some of these other things are reactive and operational and, and that. It's called planning, the section is called planning. And yet, none of these things really relate to planning. They, they more, they're, they're an implementation of existing plans. It's not, they're not moving forward, are they? I'm trying to think, so, you know, I'm trying to see what's the bottom off items that, that are. So with this budget, we can't leave. And now I'll change to get to it. So the key decision point, I think, for council here is, I don't think you necessarily need to change that number for purposes of this budget. But my decision point is whether council wants to carry this amount over every year, add to it. So it's not ten thousand and change every year, from ten to twenty to thirty. And then you'll get, eventually get to a number that gives you some financial attitude to start tackling some of these growth management and infrastructure issues. Uh, that, that are inevitable questions that the community is going to face. So we're leaving that line.
So you're proposing we add to it every year then? What's the appetite for that?
Roll that amount over every year and they'll want it. So roll it over, so not. We're not suggesting changing this budget, but, but, but what we do with it.
So we're suggesting renaming the line.
Yeah.
Um, and again, I'd like to, before I, before I dedicate, you know, ten thousand dollars a year into perpetuity into. Whatever you, uh, we're, we're talking about here, I, I'd want to see what the alternative methods are and what, what our last O C P cost us. Um, it seems to me we're committing to a sort of gold plated consultant run O C P, uh, review process that I'm, I'm not prepared to do at this point.
Okay, Mr. Black, well, once again, tell us, you, you've had experience with O C Ps or these planning process? If it wasn't an O C P but with planning, what would you recommend? Just rather than us, uh, directing you to a full on study, is there something you can tell us? Given your experience?
Yeah, so, so the bottom line is, do you want the financial capacity to, to look at any growth management? Or do any growth management work? So what is involved in that? C P's, zoning bylaws, demographic analysis, um, uh, uh, annexation, uh, uh, analysis. If there's a desire to amalgamate with West Vander or, or the other rush in north. Uh, because there needs to be a greater area to, for, 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 for water or who knows what. Uh, there's all kinds of growth management issues that most municipalities dig into. Uh, it would be wise for Lions Bay to be contemplating that rather than the old municipality doesn't sort of think about growth. Its future and growth management, have to contend with it. The issues of climate adat- adat- adaptation, you heard Mr. Bur speak to, uh. The issue of it tonight. I think what he didn't touch on is the fact that we almost have no snowpack. Would that be correct?
Yep.
And so there's a question around water security. What are we doing around sort of land use planning, growth management? Not it, we have ten thousand dollars. Is that wise? I would say.
Could you put together a, a, a report without tying up all the staff or put together a small report based on your experience? That, that might give us a little bit of something to, to look at and clarify, counselor writer.
Well, I'm not clear what council looking for. I mean, I.
A recommendation. I think what I'd be looking for is a recommendation, I mean, you consider long term planning.
Sure, my recommendation is always be, is obvious, not perfect. Don't change that proposed budget number. But have a policy to roll to build on that for year after year. Um, you will never be in a mouth during your elected office, this elected term, that'll ever be an issue. Uh, you won't, you won't have enough money by the end of your term to do very much planning. This is a longer term, closer to the end of the next term for you now enough. To do it in deep dives into some of these growth management studies, whether it be O C P zoning bylaws. I mean, it's hard to predict what growth management studies are going to be necessary. Some of these things may come from the province, think about the housing study, uh, thing that was done, housing needs assessment that was downloaded by the province. It's hard to, to, uh, identify some, some of these things that come down from the province. Look at these recent bills that have come down that are, that will recover, surround economy and, and fill, and fill growth. Um, so far Lions Bay has dodged that bullet, but.
Waiter to a robulation, right?
Yeah.
So I mean, in terms of limited resource, I mean, I, I understand the argument that there are things coming at us, but I think before we. Before we say, here's a line item, uh, for the future for this, I mean, I, given the limited resources, um. I think there's, so first have to be a discussion about what appetites are. I mean, you mentioned amalgamation and, and, uh. With either to the north or, or to the south. I mean, what kind of appetite is there for that? I mean, uh, you mentioned the environmental aspect. Heck, I'd rather put in a line item for securing and, uh, long term planning for our water security. I mean, I'd be happy with that. That's what I care about, water supply. Um, I, to me, that, I mean, I, I, I see where we're at. That's as most important.
So I'm not trying to suggest to you any given project that council should be thinking about. I'm talking about this budget. I'm not suggesting council change this budget number that's before you. What I'm saying is going forward. Rather than set the clock back to zero every year and allocating ten thousand, seven, thirty six. You may want to be more strategic and add to that every year. You don't even have, you don't even have to decide that.
We have the next one and move this one on. You've got the first ten thousand. We have the discussion next year and we, we, it seems to be where we're going. So it's for tonight, I think we done one percent too.
Yeah. Um, I think the budget is there, it's how it's going to be used.
Yes, so I'd just like to get back to what else we might need in order to be done with the operating part of this budget. Nice. Um, what else we might need? And then maybe a quick discussion on what we're going to, might need or see some supplemental that are coming out. Um, for me, one thing on this, on the current budget and the one thing that, um, has been discussed. Several times in previous councils, have been brought up many times, is, you know, having, trying to have a look and this is the. Probably in the weeds and you can tell it's an operational issue, I should get back up to strategic. Um, but it's just a review of, um, small, um. Small kept services type fees that seem to involve. And I remember the last time we had an A P report, oh, by the way, would you like to keep A P report?
Yeah, there has been, I may, um. There has been one comparative, I mean, it was slated for our last meeting, but that was.
When I look through those, I see, I see all these lines for video service, well, you know, there's five lines for terrorists and four lines for Rogers. Um, and the seat design number seems to be around here on the end. It's hugely this budget this year. Um, so staff function, I think to look at those and see if there's ways to, to amalgamate them, to keep one kind of package deal, to pull things together. Um, I would just like, you know, I'd like to see something from staff saying, yeah, we've looked at this and this is what we think, we're agreeing on what I'm doing. Um, but suggesting that it's, I'd like to do it, but I'd like to see the staff as a damage and has something to show us.
If I could, I completely agree, uh, that we try to do the best we can to achieve that across this budget this year. Uh, this process has been, it's not been optimal. It's better than it was last year. Uh, uh, but it's not optimal. Going forward for the next budget cycle, these are absolutely the due diligence, the due diligence, uh, assessments that need to be done. Absolutely agree with you. It's, it's, it's how we defend our budget. By saying we reviewed this and this is the best deal we can achieve for taxpayer. So I completely agree. The one question I was going to ask Joe to pipe in on at some point is. So you've seen this base budget, what tax increase does this represent? So that council can start discussing whether it is acceptable or non acceptable and if not, what changes? Does that answer your question?
Joe? Uh, so. This does spread the current core budget at six percent, represent a. Tax increase percentage, um, uh. Uh, very, uh, amount of, uh, hundred ninety dollars per home and property taxes.
Sorry, Joe, you said that again. So that's six percent.
Six percent.
So this budget is based on six percent.
On six percent. My recommendation would be, um, that, uh, you actually land around, um. Uh, I would say nine percent, which is a mine, um, if you round up, uh, or down, I'll have you with the other communities in the lower mainland. Um, that would represent a two hundred sixty nine dollar per home, uh, increase in the current year. And, um, I would, in my recommendation, use that. And um, I would, in my recommendation, use that additional amount, which is not a lot. Um, in gross dollars, uh, that difference would be um, about fifty-five thousand dollars from six percent, six percent tax increase and overall revenue. Uh, but that we use that money to. Uh, I basically add to our uh, reserves for the future years for our plan, for um, I I. Infrastructure, um, we, we we just need to start recognizing that. It's it's not a lot, um, in a global sense, in our, in our, uh, in our dollar supplies. Uh, um, uh, in a, in a current year, but over a period of ten to fifteen years, it creates um, uh. Additional flexibility for um, addressing either emergencies that come up or um, uh, planning for projects. And um, that money, um, uh, after our discussion with our um, and a council meeting hopefully. An adoption of a investment policy, that we invest those funds and. There are an additional interest on those funds probably invested, um, and uh, and that way contribute to our reserves.
Mr. Blackwell. Thanks, uh, so as you see, I use my piece of advice to you, if you're comfortable with what you've seen here. And it represents six percent. I would direct staff to move ahead accordingly as a placeholder, it's a preliminary number. To Mr. Chirco's point, I think that's an important point, but my recommendation is council consider that additional three percent. As in in the context of that supplemental discussion, because you have other expenditures that are quite pressing. So I would move that additional three percent, you can always, if if you decide that that's where you wanna go. Can revisit the base budget, increase it that, it from this number to by by three percent. Or not.
So to be clear, you're suggesting we accept it at six percent and move the three percent additional into the supplemental discussion?
Well, it's to fine tune that, okay. What I'm saying is, if council is reasonably comfortable, and this may not be one hundred percent, but if you're ninety percent. Comfortable with this, uh, sort of give that preliminary direction to staff that, you know. In this, in this case, it's six percent, say, you know, we are comfortable with this six percent as a starting point. That will then allow us to move to move into the supplemental discussion for the next meeting. You'll work through all of those and that's a different percentage, then you're gonna have to take part A and part B when you make some top decisions. And you may not, if if you decide six percent is a good starting point. After the supplemental discussion, that may change, you may choose to go down to five percent or something.
Before we commit ourselves to something perhaps hastily ahead of time?
Okay, so to be clear, I'm not suggesting council should commit to this base budget. I'm just saying, I'm asking council to say yes or no, are you comfortable with, in this case, what she uses here? And what it represents, which is six percent, as a starting point. Uh, the core budget can't change, it is what it is, unless you decide to change the level of service. The supplementals, you have a lot more latitude. Uh, you know, there's a fire truck, I believe, in the supplementals, whether you fund that this year, next year, whenever that you have flexibility. But you don't have flexibility with our system so far. So to the extent you can, as a placeholder or preliminary first cut at a number. Uh, if council can discuss that and you say, you know, we're, uh, as you first go, yeah, this is great or no, it's not, we wanna change it. By this or that, let's lock it in as a tentative first step. Then we'll move into the supplementals for next meeting, work through all that, then a meeting after that, we bring both together. And that's a really hard discussion. That's the real talk, cuz that's where you finalize what supplementals are on the table or what's off the table. I think, and relative to that core budget, the percentages associated with that, Councilor Brown? Yeah, I think we should move ahead with with the budget as presented, and if, I mean, if if council feels that it should be. Two percent, and we then, we ask staff to go back and generate a a budget of two percent. It'd be a hell of a whole bunch of time spent doing that. Um, and then we we come on the other side and the supplemental, so say, well, that doesn't make sense. I mean, I think we just have to find out some, and I think this is, this is a, a lot of work has been done, makes a lot of sense. And uh, I think it will be much better informed when we look at the supplementals as to as to. And I'd like to see that. Um, I.
If I could categorize, that's something, I would say it's effectively the same, it's the same as last year, rinse and repeat. Except that there are being, there have been some adjustments to deal with uh, inflation and a few minor intuits here and there. But it's largely. I mean, these operational budget, these core budgets really don't change much, we're just about the core. By the way, on that, we don't need a resolution on this, you know. We just need sort of consensus that you're comfortable with that number so we can build on. This is not the final number, this is just the starting point number. Cuz if you say this is unacceptable, we want three percent, then staff is gonna have to have a different conversation.
Yeah, why don't we take a five-minute recess and just, we need a little break, yeah, just a five-minute break. Okay, not the map, Mr. Chair.
Okay, do you wanna, comment what I said before?
Right, I, the, uh, so I believe, uh, yes, I think it would be prudent to, uh, uh, get a tentative, uh. Decision on a report which the um, the rate raises. That's my understanding that so far, from comments, we've had that that six percent is a core base budget probably tax, it's acceptable. And then we'll report with the discussion of the capital projects or supplementals, um, and then we'll come back and marry the two. With regards to um, utilities, uh, service budgets, I've heard, um, for this conversation that they should effectively break even. Um, and uh, if I, council would like to direct uh, the next version to effectively, uh, that, uh, do the math to have the rating created this. Break even bridge department in the budget, I can, I I quite easily update that. Um, and provide analysis on like what the per-home cost increases. If I do that, um, the water actually rate would go down a little bit, and that would also be the highest one. By twenty thousand dollars and that would, uh, sewer and solid waste would go up, but effectively the same amount, they all wash up. Okay, Councilor Allen?
Yeah, um, my comment on on the break even, by the way, was it should at least break even? So I was a listener suggestion, took a few, a few dollars out of the water cuz we're gonna use, not what my suggestion was. The other one should at least break even. So just making forward to what I was saying to you earlier and before to what we're gonna do next, if you look at page forty-five. I was trying to make sense of the numbers on the second line here, the beach park project. Um, and I think. The budgeted in twenty twenty-three. Um, it's kind of throwing me off. For this, this number, there's quite, only a hundred and thirty thousand, it's not adding up to me, it doesn't make sense, I don't have a computer there. If you look at it differently, you've got, um, I think they, I think they've budgeted in twenty-three, they're two hundred thousand dollars, if I remember. There is a project cost, not our cost, cuz I remember in the meeting, I suggested we go, well, the beef farm was growing late. But we're gonna get something done and we find, we put design figures, and I think we thought we could get the base cap back, and that's we wrote to two hundred. So I think that's what we did last year, is that's a project cost. As opposed to bringing out a investment line item or the next one, uh, the end number, the hundred nineteen thousand. That's seems to be what you calculated and we need to fund for our portion of it.
This year.
This year, this is completing it. In this budget, we plan to complete the beach park this year, right, and it's the remaining portion of our contribution to the seventy to the twenty-five percent.
Because the two hundred thousand was funded, it's sitting in reserves.
It's funded and sitting in reserves, yeah.
It didn't cost us two thousand. It, it was only been approved, we haven't spent that.
It's two hundred thousand dollars of project cost.
Yes.
Okay, so that means of the project remain, we've now, we've got left, um, eight hundred and seventy thousand.
Yes.
Okay, and.
But no, no, because we haven't spent that two hundred thousand yet. We've only spent about something, twenty-five thousand.
And that's number we haven't got, that's why I asked earlier.
We, we needed to spend column in here as well to make this thing.
Been a lot of it, yeah, yes.
At the point, and I I'm taking, I'm speaking here because I'm taking the blanket, this is the presentation I've been asking for. Uh, so so council can see what they are getting, for in the beach parks case, a hundred nineteen thousand dollar funded. You're getting to complete a one point oh seven million dollar project.
But I think we need more than a hundred nineteen thousand dollars, so if we said, we just said eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars still to go. If we'd spent in this year.
Yeah, seven hundred and forty-nine comes from grant.
So it just, um, eight hundred and seventy. And we're repaying for. We spent twenty-seven thousand dollars, right? So we need two hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars.
So you have to first prep the seven forty-nine, cuz that's already funded too.
One hundred and seventy-fourty-nine already funded.
It's the grant.
The grant is seventy, the grant is seventy-three percent of one, maybe you still, you know.
Seventy percent of one oh six nine, seventy-five percent of one oh six nine.
Only if you spend it.
Only if you spend it.
Yes.
But that's what we're buzzing to spend.
So, so if you add the seven forty-nine, you're saying if you add seventy forty-nine and one one nine, right?
And two hundred already funded, plus two hundred.
Yeah, I think seventy plus two is one point oh seven.
But the, here's the problem, two hundred, the two hundred already funded is including the grant money.
Yes, total cost. Yeah, that's correct, the point is, it's been paid for. And in mark for this project at this.
The total, the total grant money is seven hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars.
Seven forty-nine, seven forty-nine.
No, 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 the total grant was one thousand and seventy, one million and seventy thousand dollars, of that, they are giving us seven hundred and eighty-one dollars. Seven hundred and eighty point seven.
Yeah, I don't know why my numbers are not the same then.
That, that's, that's a given, that is seventy-three percent of a million dollars. So that's why I think you interpreting that two hundred as, as our, uh, as our contribution, it's not the two hundred.
It includes theirs as well.
Yes, so.
Well, we need to tweak that.
You need to fix this, cuz you can never get more than seven hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars from them, from them.
So we didn't tax for two hundred thousand, we taxed seventy-five percent of that.
We should, yeah, seventy, seventy-three percent.
Seventy-three, okay, that's used to fix. But I believe.
Oh, so we taxed for twenty-three, sorry, tax for twenty-seven percent, yeah.
Yes.
Seventy-three is there, it's twenty-seven. Okay, so I think if we get that extra column and this also, it makes sense to us, then it's something in line there, so that's all I was asking for.
Yeah, the other.
Sorry, go. Yeah, and if we get that on more together, I think we can, we can all like, sure, line up and work.
Yeah, we can tie it up on that, because, and it's only on the grant on it once, so I need to make sure that it reflects what we taxed for.
Yes.
Not what a total compensation.
Yeah, and I think that's got confused.
Okay.
Um, the, the other one is on the, on the fire truck, which I think is gonna be a healthy and robust discussion, I would imagine. Um, so in these supplementals, we have a, a plan to get one on a lease, it would seem, over the five years. Can we get M F A fifteen in the year alone? And look at that, cuz that makes more sense, cuz then we own the fire truck at the end of fifteen years. Right, as opposed to a residual nine hundred thousand dollars, something else gets.
Joe, um, I I would like to, uh, uh, say that, yeah, I will finish off the question. Um, but we're getting into the weeds here on supplementals, so. Uh, if there's a, some further clarification that you'd like in advance of the package going up next Tuesday.
Yeah.
Please direct, uh, your, uh, email to me directly or call me or come visit me, and I'm happy to walk through this or update. Uh, but it's getting a little bit out of scope, what we're trying to achieve here.
That's fine, but there's my two requests, was like, can we, can you do it with a loan option for the fire truck? I think that's gonna be one, maybe we'll say this.
And I, and to finish off that, but that was, uh, in our next meeting, that would be my recommendation is that we go to a big get along over fifteen years. Because by the end of fifteen years, we sell it at, sell it at solid value, and then we buy a new track, as we've been.
Been reading my mind, really, well then, I've been, I, I, there wasn't any, I don't know if anyone thought of it, I did that.
If I could just point out, uh, one more thing, as you asked if the budget was the same as last year, just inflated. Not quite, because we changed the way we would present the maintenance items, uh, in in the public works budget. So you're actually getting more bang for your buck this year than in previous years, cuz we haven't changed it to be oranges to oranges in prior years. So, some supplementals have been moved into the regular, uh, uh, budget. On the other hand, as you pointed out, the uh, the jetty, that's not really maintenance, that needs to be moved into a supplement. So maybe it comes out in a while, but the, we will, Joe and I will re-present in time of next meeting.
So if you didn't put it in jetty, you're still going to need some repairs to the beach front or have some allocation on that?
The data, the data. How we pay for it is a nice, if if we want the jetty to remain, it's gonna have to be. Kind of it's a medium standard be gone.
Right, so, because I'm just saying, if we, if we weren't to designate any funds for the jetty from somewhere else. You've still gotta do some repairs potentially, and may stay in that beach.
I mean, the, the point is. Well, because I, I just mentioned to you, I just got off the phone with the guy, so I, the point is, the six percent.
It's gonna be more damages.
Oh, yeah, it's gonna get worse, not better.
It's gonna get worse.
Uh, the six percent number that Joe mentions, it's almost arbitrary, because. You're gonna have to fund a lot more than just the six percent increase for the maintenance for the, for the core budget. And the, and the increase that people will see is a different number, it's not gonna be six percent, you can't, well, we started with six, and we ended up with. I don't know if we're gonna mention it, but, um, so don't get too fixated on the six percent, that's really just a way of. Long-term correlation and and maybe a little bit of reserve. And maybe this time we actually should accommodate some stuff that previously we were, we were done in in supplementals. But the six percent is, that's just the start.
All right, Joe, um, are there any further questions? Uh, okay, um, I, I didn't have any further comments at all, uh, so please feel free to, uh, reach out to me directly. Uh, if you have any comments, questions, or requests for a presentation, uh, that I can now work into, the, the next version of this is provided for. Okay, Mr. Blackwell.
Also, in conclusion, just wanna say thank you for this input, we will proceed knowingly. What council can expect for the next meeting is a presentation, we meet you, uh, we'll call it department heads. So you know who they are, and they always give you a very brief overview of each of the supplemental, the lies. But what happens if you do, what happens if you don't, sort of high-level overview, ask the questions. Uh, of them, that might take us close to the end of that meeting. And you may just wanna take it away, all that information away, contemplate it, come to the following meeting, and really start unpacking those, those things.
So the meeting's planned for a week to at least, yes.
Okay, any further questions before we adjourn?
Yeah, so next Tuesday is gonna be a, a regular council meeting in addition, or are we, or what are we doing?
No, I think it's just.
If it was scheduled, definitely, then my question is, are we gonna start at five or six?
We're gonna do five, go forward.
Hey, Councilor Ryder.
Sir, I, I'm confused, can we not have a regular council meeting scheduled for next Tuesday? So I I'm I'm confused. Can we not have a regular council meeting scheduled for next Tuesday?
Okay, the next is, Council out. Trying to get this scheduled, can't seem to.
Council out.
Um I was gonna point out, before you, before you joined, uh we added that public participation at the beginning of. So you should see who you.
Sure. Okay, uh anyone from Public Light task if question, please raise your hand. Marina?
Uh Deirdre was, was the first that she may want to ask something at the end.
It's not got to do with the budget, so that I don't know if that's okay, but but I was thinking about, right when I got the letter for the um vacancy, passing that they're saying that Lions Bay still involved in, did nothing happen with all the work that um Councilor Boyer did? As far as getting held down?
Uh, Mr. Allen? Or sorry, Mr. Blackwell? Our Council Writer, you can jump in.
Shall I?
Sure.
Uh so what I can tell you is that council has moved the letter to the point where a draft is finalized, well, draft, I guess it is a draft. Uh it's sitting with admin to print it off on a special paper. Uh it's gone back and forth and fine tuned it to make sure it it resonates as well as it can, as much purchase with the province as it can.
Yeah.
Uh it's so I would suspect to be ready to be signed by tomorrow or the next day and then it'll go off to the province. Uh where, what happens after that, it's hard to say. Uh but with a bit of luck, the province will choose to engage with 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 the village or with the council or something to explore this and and hopefully good things will happen.
Bit of an interesting. One of those needs father return.
It must file a return. Online, it's very quick. They must do it.
And is all the council agreeing to that moving forward as far as they can be?
Yeah, we had a resolution of that back in October and the agreement was that we would petition the provincial government for exemption. Yeah, yeah.
Hey, Marina, any questions? Okay, uh motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Okay, all the favor.
Yes, I.
So Ross, does that mean you can bring the utility bylaws?